Before everything was indicated was that we've got a good relationship with mosquito control board. But I think it would be good for us as a board, but also for the public to know what we're doing in our schools. Now, in regard to this school health plan that we see before us, obviously there's, like I said, a broad brush approach, but has the county health department, I know that's one thing I really did hear in the safety meeting was are they involved in this issue with us? I know obviously they're involved in the county, but can you expel on that a little bit?
I can. We've been in contact, Pam Carvalho, our student health specialist, been in contact with Janora, who's our connection with the health department from the very beginning of this. Everything regarding insect repellent, information to share with nurses, to then share with health attendants, to look for symptoms if students present in the clinic. We've been in contact with them on a weekly basis, sometimes daily for guidance, yes.
And the insect repellent that I learned in the safety meeting is, it's not a violation, it's not medicine, it's not medical, so students can't carry insect repellent. That's what I understand, is that right, Mr. Bradshaw? You probably haven't been there without me yet.
Yeah, I'm actually, Ms. Albrecht, in contact with me when we treat the safety issues, we do such great, I believe, is that right?
What we're going to treat it is, because you're right, it is not a medication that we are going to share with parents, that if they do bring it in, they have to present to the front office so the principal knows about it. They will not be able to keep it on their possession, it'll be kept in the classroom or in a designated area in the office. It will not be kept in the clinic because it's not medicine.
Well, I think those would be the things that I would like to see us talk about further. Again, this plan, I agree with you, it's very thorough, but you know, this is a, every day it seems that it's getting to be more of a concern throughout the nation, it is. And so I thought, you know, it would be good to communicate that with our parents and what we're doing. I think we're ahead of the curve, we're trying to stay ahead.
And if it would please the board, just a suggestion, I am very well prepared to share what we have been directed to do from Governor Scott and what we've done as a district up until today, if you'd like that now, or if you would rather wait, whatever places the board.
[inaudible]
I'm good.
Would we put on a September or a January agenda? Is it four weeks?
Who's coming in doing this? I'm not even sure that I understand, I don't know, Ms. Albrecht, if you know what you're going to be presenting to us at this point, what is the board looking for? I know, I appreciate what you're sharing, but I mean, like, some of this, I'm trying to figure out where it falls into the school board's responsibilities and duties and safety, and what does this also have to do with just re-getting information that the county or the health departments are doing of mosquito control list? Because I don't necessarily know that mosquito control overlaps with what-
It's probably a both, you go into from the S A spring, suddenly it becomes very real, you know, around New Year's Eve and stuff, so I think the answer is both, but certainly our perspective is different, which is why it was much like pulling the tick epidemic that we had, we had these small things, you can get ticks, you study this, but then you suddenly realize they're carrying diseases and make people very ill and people die. Same with mosquitoes, they might at first seem something else, we need to put up the skills, but no, no, it was a different element now introduced, so we need to know what's being done to address and educate kids and what's being done in school to avoid going out and letting mosquitoes jump all over you, you probably got the spread, so I think we have to focus on those sides. We can also bring in maintenance, we can bring in maintenance and the only scheme to figure out this to the board and off the board.
Like state orders?
Yeah. Oh, I have one thing I want to say, excuse me for the problem, but many times, parents will ask about the B M I and why we're doing that, we shouldn't be doing that, is that invasive or something? And this is part about state authority to do, so we're doing it, it's directed to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, favor?
Hi.
This is Mr. Seer, thank you.
I just want to thank, if we could, Ms. Carvalho for sending out, and she always is so good about sending out information this morning, we got heat-related illnesses. I know that went out to the coaches as well, and anyone who's been out in the fields right now, it's hot out there right now, it's very hot, and hydration is so critical, so thanks for making sure our kids stay safe.
Next we have the District English Language Learners, you know, ELL plan.
Good morning.
Full of bathrooms.
Yes. Education language, good morning. I'm here today on behalf of Mr. Hebert seeking approval of the 2016 through 2019 District English Language Learners Plan, the ELL plan.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the 2016 and 2019 District English Language Learners ELL Plan.
Second, it's been moved by Mr. Dard, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve the 2016 and 2019 District English Language Learners ELL Plan. Go ahead, questions? Maybe this is just an extension of what we have.
Correct, there's been three revisions that had to be added to the plan. One, we needed to update for access for ELLs, the assessments that's used, WEDA standards have now replaced the former ELL standards, so just different type of standards for instructions similar to what we do in our general curriculum to our Florida standards. And then some strategies were adjusted for parent advisory groups. We've tried to do, I know through the ELL committee work, they've tried to do central meetings and just one big county meeting to encourage parental involvement from our ELL population, and hasn't been well attended. So now they're talking, they've added into the plan, doing some smaller group school meetings, looking at our high population schools and doing it where it's at the home site. So those are the three revisions that were added to the continuation of our plan.
Page 22, it talks about the particular reasons or body parents to leave. And I was wondering, because I know there's a lot of problems sometimes getting parents of the children, particularly Chinese, Japanese, their parents to come in and talk, so we got set up social work to sit down and talk with the parent to lower the anxiety level because if you're going into a group where it's being kind of structured, like, you can be a little anxious, but then have social work went out to talk to the parent, and we had that many, hundreds and hundreds in doing that, brought that very positive results. And also brought the parents sometimes to tour the school again because they're unfamiliar and nervous, you know, just a little bit anxious, and so they're going to continue to tour, so they can be comfortable with the school, and the results again, positive, so maybe if they don't have a chance to speak with one of the social workers or two or three of them, and lose their support to do that.
Definitely, that would be a great strategy to help support that.
My wife just got, it's been a while since she's had a complete non-speak, non-English speaking student, and so this year they've-
She has one, no?
She's got one this year. And what is, it was very pleasurable to see was how a school reacts to that. One of them is Mayo Gutierrez, who is a music teacher there from Puerto Rico, and so he went around on open house night and, you know, worked with them. And he's put together at times where he'll go and check on those kids, have lunch with them, so they have someone to talk to, try and make sure their schedules match with them. And I know these are strategies we do all the time, and I guess what I'm saying is some of these aren't always necessarily in a plan, but they're things we do. One of the coolest things, I know it's a good mention that I would feel this way, but is that they're using the iPads as like a universal translator. And so in class, the students are speaking into it, and then it's speaking and printing out what they need to do and vice versa. My wife did an icebreaker at the beginning of school, she immediately could just go online with kind of the Spanish version of it. And then I was excited to hear that Title I department, I believe that Ms. Douglas and Mr. Gutierrez are looking to work together and maybe have some offering of Spanish versions of our parent universities. So that, again, and why, I say Spanish right now, there's a reason. Right now, if you look at Central Florida, there is a substantial increase in just the last three to five years in our Latin population, it's increasing. In Orlando schools, it's been an increase of 33 percent. And they're, Mr. Gutierrez, who also is part of developing of Latin groups within and kind of working with it, it's growing. Citrus County is an attractive area, it kind of meets a lot of their needs, it meets a lot of their business and retirement. So I think we're going to just continue to see that number grow even in our area, not certainly to maybe what some of the more cities have, but I think that this plan is an excellent way, but I also think that what we're doing systemically and reactively and very positive in the schools. And I like the technology is playing a role in that.
Yes, it's definitely, they'll provide more resources and support to those ELL learners as they come into our district.
Is the Rosetta Stone, and I know, I'm just saying this in case Dr. Goes hears, is, I know at one time we had it, it was going to be on the iPads for some of our ELL, or is that happened?
I can't answer that, I know it's, we have it as a-
I thought it was, but I wasn't sure that, for some reason I thought, if we got one license, we also got a license for the iPad or something, but I didn't know that it was working.
I keep looking over my shoulder because Katie Manning is supposed to be walking in, she's coming back there.
She's from this school. Katie, hi, perfect timing.
Katie, do you recall the Rosetta Stone is on the iPad for some of our students?
Yes, sir, it is.
That was on the iPad. Thank you, I'm doing that.
Rosetta Stone, how do you find it?
At Rosetta Stone, actually in English, so that those students can learn-
Oh, for them, not us.
Yeah, it's actually for them, not us learning of the language as much as, am I correct, Katie, that it's for those that don't have English, it's for them to learn English using Rosetta Stone as the product?
Correct, yes. We are pleased to be providing and supporting that resource for our students. All of our active ELLs have a license, and it is compatible for iPad or computer. The preferred method is iPad, just because it's more accessible for students, but you know, in some cases, we do install that software on the classroom computer as well. And then our secondary students that are ELL have the capability of taking that iPad home and accessing Rosetta Stone from home as well.
Katie, I was saying, my wife's got found that the iPads become like a universal translator for all of text, I should say, trackers out there, because it allows them to speak into it, vice versa, and actually speak back and provide that information.
Yes, it's been very helpful in providing our ELL students, and you get feedback with their language acquisition. We program them to use the English version of Rosetta Stone, and so we work with the cell coordinators at the school site, as well as their classroom teacher, to determine what levels appropriate for them. Currently, we're looking at their assessment data from just this break to make sure that that Rosetta Stone program is most meaningful, whatever level that we program them into for this coming school year.
I notes here that if school has 150 or more ELL students in it, then you have an aide assigned, an ELL aide, but do we have any school that has 150 ELL students in it?
No, ma'am, we have approximately 150 District Y, across elementary and secondary. I believe the number is, if there's more than 15 that speak the same language at a school, they would have an aide, and there's only been one elementary school in the past two years that has hit that number.
When did, that's figured the red, the extra zero.
Katie, we have Forester, a gentleman, for businesses, we had more than 15 students speaking Spanish.
Okay, that must have been the test.
Correct, they've had a professional there who is able to communicate in Spanish. And we have some others that are close, but they have not met that 15 student cap.
And you know, just because sometimes the public misunderstands, one of the things that's very positive that I saw both was planning and executions, we are, we are helping students stay learning throughout that year, because that first year in particular is very difficult, because it's hard to have a lot of substantive learning going on. But we're also trying to make sure that they learn English. We truly are, you know, not simply just trying to accommodate them, but we are truly trying to educate them. And I appreciate that, because I think that's our emphasis in the district, the staff's doing that, and I very appreciate it.
I'm glad you pointed that out, too, that we believe this is a way to progress and truly learn, and therefore they can come with themselves. Well, then I thank you, thank you, very good, I will thank you, I, those, here, so thank you. Thank you. Next, we have the district testing calendar for Central Schools.
I have a story to tell you. I get this text from my nephew, off the top of your head, do you happen to know when spring break is?
For this year?
Yeah, it's, and I text him back, right, oh, that's beautiful.
Fair week.
Good morning, I'm here for two things. The first thing is to ask for approval for 2016-17 district testing calendar for Citrus County Schools. So the district testing calendar, you know, each year we have that. This year, however, is different than the previous years. According to statute, the state has said that each school district now must complete this uniform statewide assessment calendar template, where the state provided us, every district, the same template, it's like nine pages long, as you can see there, they've completed most of it with all of the statewide assessments that are required, and then we complete the part where we have district-acquired assessments. And then another component that is in addition to what we've had in the past, is the very end, we have to complete an estimate of total testing time by grade level. Because remember also, the statute is that a school district may not schedule more than 5 percent of a student's total school hours in a school year for statewide and district-acquired assessments. So we need to calculate per grade level, how many minutes, you know, per school year, instructional school year they were testing, and make sure that it is not falling to that 5 percent. So as you can see on that last page, none of our grade levels are past 3 percent. In fact, most of them are at that 1 percent mark when you look at the instructional time spent. So I mean, there is that misconception, I know a lot of times where a parent sees our testing calendar, and yes, it looks like testing, it doesn't look like, testing is going on all year long. However, when you look at just one child, how much time are they testing in either state-acquired assessments or district-acquired assessment? It isn't as much, you know, when you look at that one child at each grade level. So that component is something that is new, and is part of the uniform statewide assessment calendar. Once that district piece is approved, we then have to publish it, of course, on our district website, all of our schools put it on theirs, and the link is also in our parent guide. And we do have to submit our calendar to the board by October 1st.
I was glad you had that taken there, because when I started going, my Lord, why don't we just send the kids into classroom and give them a computer and come back and give them in May, you know, because we're asking the whole year.
Correct.
But the percentage, I can see that it wasn't as much as I thought it was.
But there is some things that are not on this, and this has nothing to do with Ms. Crowe and Ms. Dunn, it's all, it's amazing, and nor does it have to do with anything that, it doesn't include AP two exams.
Because, correct, those are-
Because they're not, it's not required.
AP and AP exams are not in there.
ACT or SAT exams.
Those are not required.
Those are not. I don't believe includes ETEs or whatever we're calling them now.
They do.
Or they are in there?
Actually, we did, and that was at, not controversial, but we questioned including our finals, high school finals, we did include that in there, and that is why you would see in 11th and 12th grade, the numbers higher than you would think, because, you know, we don't have FSA or ULCs and things like that in our 11th and 12th grade. So, but we do have, the district assessments you can see there are required, because in our progression plan, we do say that finals are administered in all courses in the high school at the end of each nine weeks. So we did calculate those in there, finals, and we calculated the EOTs in our middle school that are required.
But we also, of course, it doesn't include for an individual student retakes.
Correct, because those are select students.
And for some students, when you add all those together, and again, I'm saying this for the legis, here's what I know is happening, this is the legislators trying to now give a report back to the public, saying, see, we're not over-testing, and I'm just saying, this is really only one snapshot of a perfect situation, and it doesn't include all of the dynamics of that child's testing. And an example of that is, they're going to have to take the ACT and SAT, for example, and-
Like, if they're looking at that as a choice of the student to take-
They're going to say that's a choice of the student. On the other hand, if you're in an AP exam, you're going to be taking, in some cases, a final, a EOT, I mean, an EOC, and you may end up then taking a, or ETE, and then you're, no, is it EOT?
EOT.
EOT, and then you're going to be also taking AP exam.
Correct.
So, and that's where-
Which are right, AP, IB, AP, IB and retakes are not part of this.
They're not part of it.
Because they are considered choice, same thing like with ACT, SAT, you don't need to take an AP course, that is the student's choice to take that, knowing that that AP test is, you know, for the student to get college credit, you know, I mean, that's what they're looking at it as, and it's not part of the grade either.
Here's the problem, you can't get Bright Futures unless you get an SAT or ACT score that's high enough. And so what do our kids end up doing? They're taking those tests over and over and over, trying to get a higher score. So I, this is nothing to do with your department.
Aren't we taking those on Saturday?
They are taking those on Saturday, although there was conversation about offering that very-
We offer, we do offer ACT during the school day in September, just for our students that, you know, those that can't come on Saturday, they don't have transportation, or they work and things like that. So we do offer, Citrus County does offer a school day ACT, we started it last year, and this is our second year doing it.
And again, my point of just reminding the board is, I believe this is going to come back to us, this is going to be, legislators are using this so that they can then say, either running or answering school boards, when we say, we want you to reduce testing, they're going to say, well, you guys aren't testing that much anyway. And I'm saying, it's not going to be a complete picture.
Right, this is only required tests.
This is only the required tests, but it doesn't necessarily mean all the tests that a student would need to take. And I say that because, for example, if you're Bright Futures and you're going to college, you're going to need that Bright Futures, you're going to take SAT, ACT, you're just not going to do that. The other thing I just want to lift out is, Ms. Crowe did an amazing job yesterday because she testified before the court case going on for the parents of third graders that have brought suit against other counties, not ours. And her testimony was exceptional. And I think what was exceptional was, one, the way she presented Citrus County, but I also felt like it validated the fact that we are both following the law, but also meeting students' needs and doing what's best in the way for students. And, Mr. Bradshaw, thank you for accompanying her on the phone and being there, but I think that Ms. Crowe was quite, they were quite impressed with her testimony, so thank you.
Now, I'm curious to what point should I be speaking of?
She, she- Sure. I was subpoenaed to testify at the case yesterday, and they just basically wanted to know what our policy was for our third grade retention. And in Citrus County, we portfolio all of our third graders, where many counties, I guess, do not do that, many counties instead wait for a parent request for a portfolio, you know, later on in the year, and that's when they start it. However, we portfolio all of our third grade students for multiple purposes. We don't, you know, we kind of kill two birds with one stone with a portfolio assessment. We use it, yes, as a backup if we need it at the end of the year as a good cause measure. However, we also use it, though, throughout the year for instructional decisions for the teacher, they can see where holes are and gaps are in their instruction, they can communicate to parents if there's lack of mastery with standards. So using that assessment for both the purpose of portfolio and as a form of assessment throughout the year to kind of inform the teacher of how everything's going with that child and to direct their instruction, we are in a better place. So they really wanted to understand that, also how we, you know, the statute states that if a child scores two or, if a child does not score two or more on the FSA ELA, then we are able to use alternate assessments for promotion. While there were some counties that took that as, if they did not take the FSA ELA for any reason, whether they, you know, they use the words opt-out and so forth, they then were not even given the opportunity to take the other tests, SAT ten, ITBS, and so forth. So there you have parents that that's what they're doing, because they were not given the opportunity to take other things because the child did not take the FSA ELA. So our county did not do it that way, our county has used the same policy as we have in the past, that is what the law says to us, is that, you know, if they didn't take the test, they also don't have a score of two or higher. So we treat all students that got a level one or do not have a score the same way, we do offer the alternate assessments.
I think one of the things that was, was positive was, is your department doesn't try and get into an investigative why a student did or did not take a test and what was going on. It's, you treat all the students in the same manner, whether they, they got sick that day, maybe the parents had them not come to school that day, whatever the case may be.
Could have moved from New York the week after and you don't have a score.
So we treat them all.
There's multiple reasons why somebody doesn't have a score.
And we were equitable in that, that manner, and I thought that was what was appropriate. We also were the right size. You know, there's certainly districts that are larger that have different, you know, issues. I think you testified it was about 1,000 third graders or so.
You're just under 1,000.
Third graders. So certainly doing 1,000 portfolios among all those teachers, you know, is maybe a little more palatable, but I, again, I have to commend Superintendent Mr. Motlin, the executive teams, and the teachers and principals for making that commitment on portfolios. That's, that's a massive undertaking, it's right for kids, it's nothing to do with testing, it's about, it's doing right for kids' education. It happens to, that also results in usually some positive success, and if I recall in the past, we were given figures over 90 percent of pass rate of third graders in Citrus County as a result of a multitude.
We only had 5 percent.
5 percent.
Last year we had 5 percent.
95 percent that are promotion. I think that's exceptional, I think that's exceptional.
And that third grade portfolio is part of our district assessment with MIT as well, so that is incorporated in this, because our county does require that for all third graders. So anything that our county, that we are saying we want everyone to be doing, we did include that in here so that these numbers were accurate for district-acquired assessments.
I move to approve the 2016-17 district testing calendar for Citrus County Schools.
Second?
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, second. Mrs. Bryant, second, by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the 2016-17 district testing calendar for Citrus County Schools. Questions or comments? All in favor? I, those, here's four, zero, thank you. And now you're going on to the next.
Now for, just to discuss and get your feedback regarding our calendar committee that we'll be meeting next month, for the 2017-18 school calendar. I do have a few just reminders up here, I, the PowerPoint I have has who our new calendar committee is, a lot of them are returning faces, some of them are new, based on, you know, whoever the principal or supervisor is and what committee member will be coming. I also have our timeline set up here, where it's 12 steps in our timeline, where right now we are at the part number one step, the chairperson will seek input from our superintendent and school board. And then here is where I'm going to be basically putting down what your recommendations are. In the past, I have in black, those are what our board has recommended in the past for when we do meet with the committee, that Veterans Day is a holiday for students and staff, we want to stay committed to recognizing and accommodating for our Citrus County Fair, but of course, we know state testing is a priority, and we do have those dates and so forth, but we want to accommodate as much as possible. We do have the two weeks in December is our Christmas break, we want to also keep in mind the opportunity for hurricane makeups, we do use that November, that Thanksgiving break in combination with that, those hurricane makeups. The two items that I haven't read were brought to our attention this school year. We heard from many schools, teachers, support staff, a lot of principals, either called our department directly or called the executive staff directly, and really, really were loving and praising our pre-planning days this school year. This school year, we had seven days where teachers were able to pre-plan, and we believe that our smooth beginning of the year, when students did come back on that Wednesday, we really attributed to that. Our principals were so happy with the amount of time that, and teachers were so happy that they actually had time to, you know, of course, not only do the professional development that they needed at some of those days, but also to prepare and, you know, get their rooms ready and prepare for-
ready and prepare for those students. Versus at the end of the year, putting those are not normally as beneficial. They're ready to leave, they're done. Where beforehand, before school is so much of a better way to, way to use those time, that time. The other piece was support staff, beginning before students' first day was another piece that we heard from principals, that they just found that that was so helpful, to have those, that personnel there that day before for, you know, just that building of, you know, camaraderie and also partake in trainings that are required and so forth. That support staff being there before that first day with students really helped with that as well. So, I did add those two bullets for, just to bring to your attention and see if we could add those to our board recommendations for the, for the committee that we meet with next week.
I like the pre-planning days before school. They're meeting before, so I guess that's...
Pre-preed.
That really, pre-preed. But I liked it because you really get to know students and I remember, you know, as a teacher, pouring through all the records of every student. And when they came in, I knew everything about them. They used to think we were all psychics, I'd say.
And that's right. And that's right. And it's wild.
But we knew everything about students, so therefore, planning for that study, teaching us, we're so changed, because how you knew their strengths, you knew the issues they might have. So, I think it's a great, great idea.
I've got a question on the, the end of school, though. We only have one day now for teacher, teacher workdays there. How has that gone over? I know there's a little time for meetings, or you can't really meet the staff, or your teachers.
They don't wanna meet.
Talk about...
They're done.
I mean, normally at the end of the year, they have a checklist of things that they need to, you know, packing up and so forth, that they must, you know, turn in their computers, turn in this, turn in that, and once they have that checked off, I mean...
Grades?
Correct, grades. Well, the two half-days are normally, that's why they're half-days at the end of the nine weeks, for the grading purpose. Just like they have, you know, two half-days at the end of each nine weeks. And it's the same amount of grades that they're putting in. But, I mean, we haven't gotten that, we haven't gotten to the end of the year yet to see, you know, that one date, but, like I said, they, I don't think that it would be as needed at the end, because like, they're done, and honestly, you're not doing a lot of professional development right then for the following year.
No, you would, no, you would. I would, I would not see that as a professional development. I'd see that as a chance for teachers to do, you know, finish it up, and work, and getting the classrooms shut down and all their, everything turned in, but, you know, I would assume there are some, maybe some faculty meetings, but I guess with only one day, they probably don't really...
No, not a lot of faculty meetings.
In the old days, when we had data, there could be some pre-planning for that, but we don't have data now until the middle of summer, till June, you know, so...
We have trainings during June and July because of that.
It's because of that. So, unfortunately, the time it doesn't work out, it's usually, and a lot of, with Skyward now, a lot of the grades have been done, for the most part. There's very little, in the old days, there was a lot of, but it's, yeah.
And a lot of times, Skyward's grading for that, they're not even doing the grade.
They've always been stressed with four, five, pre-planning days to get everything done in time, basically, in the last week, and then we have, that's gonna train some more stuff for sure, for sure.
It was awesome. I just remember, it seemed like one of the first years in a long time that there was so much teachers were able to kind of get in. And there's never enough, but I mean...
And of course, with our committee, I mean, we have teacher representation and every, you know, on our committee that will be brought up, that, you know, the value of, do you think you'll have it all done in a day? I'm saying if that is the concern of the closeout of the year versus the pre-planning. But so far, who we've spoken to, everyone is saying that they would much rather the pre-planning time than at the end of the year.
What was it last year?
How many days?
Yeah, how many days at the end of the year?
It was two at the end.
It was only two?
It was two after, right.
And that was pretty much the trend before that, or...
Mm-hmm, that was, it's two half-days. Yeah. Sometime, yeah, it could even be, you're sitting around.
Yep. So, one is the, is the preferred, is what you're, what you're hearing.
It's what was preferred, right. It was what was preferred for now, to experience it.
I think we've heard some sort of things about the seven days of pre-planning, because then we need to pull a teacher, to group out, or meeting, or do our digital days. It feels like you got the time to be in the classroom, to get your stuff done. So, if we're doing that for five days, we do a pre-planning day or a digital day, and when they come back, the principals have usually have that push day, and we've only got a couple days in the classroom. So, I think, and she was right, when they get the teachers in about the one day of the close planning, I think the overwhelming response is gonna be the seven days. So, but that's certainly a good asset, she can make sure she gets that.
And Lindy just brought up, because she's been on our, the committee, the calendar committee, so she kind of brings that historical piece of, you know, what has been talked about before and why things are the way they are. And one thing she just said is, is that there has been previous years where it was only one day at the end, and it worked, and it was okay. In fact, she's been saying like, last year was two half-days and then one full day. And there didn't, there wasn't any negative feedback that we received from that.
And it's, it's captured and you just feel the balance, it's just one.
It was one, after the two half-days.
I think they just make sure who's ready to go. Because they're ready.
But last year, last school year, they didn't have the seven days to start the school year, correct?
Correct.
So, they still only have one day at the end, so the other planning days were mixed in the school year?
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
And, and this year, Mr. Kennedy will be on the calendar for the assessment.
So, please. Just don't send you?
Yes, because if anyone doesn't like it, please call.
You can call me. Now, I, I love being on the committee, I really do. It's a, it's a great committee, and it's very collaborative. It's extremely collaborative.
They all have computers.
Is there anything else that the board recommends that we might add to, to the list?
You know, the one thing in the past that maybe we need to just get feedback, that's been always, comes up, is, what about the holiday periods? We got the one week off at Thanksgiving, and then, okay, we have, then I was gonna say, and I'm assuming we're still maintaining that the board would prefer to do that, continue to have the, a two full week at the Christmas break, and then, and ideally, a week off for the Thanksgiving break.
And I, I just appreciate the fact that hurricane makeup days, that, you know, Amy said, and it is true, that if we have to make up a hurricane day, we'll be from...
That's always a fun thing to know.
That's why you usually make your application to the state for waiver first.
What are the dates of the fair in seventeen? I think you already said that, right?
March twenty-sixth to the thirty-first. In two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, nineteen.
Yeah, because we're talking, this, right here is for the seventeen-18 calendar.
One more.
Say it again, Amy.
March twenty-sixth to thirty-first.
And that is the testing week, correct?
The testing that is occurring during that week are retakes. Could be your, your algebra retakes and your ELA retakes in the high school. So, it would be, not all students, it would be select students that need that, still, eleven and twelfth graders that need it, still for graduation requirement.
And when is the fair this year?
This year, okay, we don't have the calendar.
March twenty-seventh through April, this is, oh, no, wait, that's, yeah, March twenty-seventh through April second.
April second.
March twenty-seventh through April second. And this year is a, that is a full testing week, correct?
Correct. However, the state has just recently extended that window. Instead of being a one week, it's now a two-week window. People that would've been test, or that are testing during the, this coming up school year, would be our third graders with ELA, which of course is a very important test. So, that originally was only a one week long. They have now extended it to be two weeks. So, we will be able to, if we have students that need to attend the fair for, you know, purposes and they're third graders, they will be able to take the test the following week. Or that was originally a major concern of ours coming into this school year.
Would you have any questions? Any suggestions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next we're going to support services. This one.
I am asking you to approve the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Goldenrod.
I'll make the motion that we approve the instructional and support recommendations as given to us in Goldenrod.
Second? Second. It's been moved by Mr. Brian to approve the instructional and support positions of the Goldenrod. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Go. Carrie Scorsese, I think.
Thank you.
And we have attorney, we will have this?
Yes, I, yeah, I decided to place a copy of a settlement agreement in the federal case by, really asked to add to the agenda, just ask that the board make a motion to approve the settlement. Thank you.
I have made the motion that we approve the settlement agreement.
I second.
Yeah, just for reference, I think that, okay, five, that's fifteen, that's C, that's five, that's B, that's C, that's P.
What he just said?
I second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Bryant, said by Mrs. Brown, to approve the settlement agreement with all the others that were just said. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Go. Carrie's three, one. Thank you, Bradshaw.
Thank you. That was all that I had.
Any other business? Mr. Mullin?
I just wanted to share the, two things. One, I appreciated the, Ms. Alagretta, she may have been gone, but, and I know it was probably the direction of Mr. Mullin and Ms. Hemel, sharing some of the data from the high schools on disciplinary action and any drug use on campuses. And I was not surprised, by sitting in this role, that the data shows that we are trending and having less, substantially less in some cases. And I think Mr. Mullin was explaining to me too, at the elementary level, we're now capturing that differently, so it's not even really that we have any increase, it's just that we are now capturing data that previously we didn't, because we're, we wanna make sure that we're capturing it correctly. But I really appreciate, I think it answered my concerns, so I'll, I'll lift, you know, leave that to you all with that. I have some exciting news that I wanted to share, and it relates to swimming in the YMCA and districts. Previously, swim districts are a little larger sometimes than other sports districts as far as how they're attended and how they're done. We've typically been having swim districts in, where that represents Citrus Counties in clear water. We have to travel down there to a venue that's been large enough to accommodate it. There's eleven schools that represent typically about three hundred and fifty to four hundred swimmers. This is a, we have a post-Olympic increase that happens in swimming, typically following the Olympics. Thank you, Michael Phelps, we appreciate that. And typically, you have about four to five hundred spectators on top of that. So, anywhere from about eight hundred to nine hundred people will attend districts for that. You know, when you think about that for a high school gymnasium, that's not so bad, but when you start talking about an aquatics venue, it's a little different. Track meets, that's easy, a field football stadium, they can do that. The, there's a eleven-person committee, that committee voted last week to relocate districts from the Clearwater Lawn Center to the Lucanto YMCA pool. And that was actually brought about by them and not us. The coaches, when they heard that there was an eight-lane pool that could accommodate competitions up here, they had contacted the parties up here and said, okay, how can we look at it and find out about it? And so, they made that move. Mr. Sheffield has been excellent at trying to help provide information. Nick Dunn, who's the aquatics manager at the YMCA, has been most accommodating. But this is what's resulting in this. This is really good for our community. You're gonna have about nine hundred people that are gonna come up here and spend money that day, and they're gonna go to restaurants. Some of them have already booked hotels, and this is truly a positive thing for our shops as well. I'm sure we can get a coupon out from Ms. Hemels. I'm sure Mr. Doug actually would put him on that. But this is positive. That would be Doug Connors, not, not Mr. Doug. No, I'm sorry.
Probably related.
But this is a result of, of one more reason for that twenty-five-year agreement with the YMCA. We are saving lives, I believe, with having the Learn to Swim or Swim Safety Program that the YMCA has. We're providing opportunities for athletics there, and now, I believe, as importantly, we're providing an economic stimulus to the community by having them come here. So, I just wanted to lift that out and share that with you. That's probably a year early, a year earlier than we anticipated, having something like that happen. And this board is a, is a result of that positive. So, thank you. Nancey?
I just want to mention the nine-eleven service, the Day of Remembrance, it's gonna take place on September eleventh, that'll be before our next board meeting, but that's on Sunday, and they're gonna have an exhibit at the Valerie Theater, and they're gonna have a Freedom Walk at five-thirty that day on nine-eleven. But I understand that they're going to continue to keep the exhibit open on Monday, the twelfth. And I've spoken to several members of NARLEO, and they're trying to get the word out there for students to be able to maybe go and take part.
Mr. Mullin and I have been in contact with the principals, and they're in contact with the teachers, and that they will be taking field trips on that day on twelfth.
It's over.
Yeah, it's scheduled.
Okay, great. Yes, that's, because they, you know, being on, on a Sunday, they do a lot of work to put that together, and it's kind of neat, it's gonna be at the Valerie, that's where it was last year, and, you know, it's, that's a neat place for students to go to, to see that downtown area. So, thank you.
The weather.
All right, great. The other thing is, we're getting ready to start Youth Leadership Citrus, and I've been involved on that board now, helped promote that program. So, I've been on the board a little over a year, right out of the year now, and they're getting ready to send information out to high schools for juniors and seniors about Youth Leadership Citrus, which is a great program opportunity for kids to learn about the county and learn about leadership. And then, you know, I see things from our state parks that come out from time to time, and I know they're getting ready to have a Living History Days at Fort Cooper, and we've got a lot of great state parks in our county, so I just, I know that Mr. Dixon usually gets the information out there when it comes in, and so there's gonna be information out about Living History Days and opportunities for students there too, so I just, I'm pretty happy. That's all I have.
And we know Mr. Dixon, Dixon emails out, and I may have told you all this, when I met with a new teacher, they said, who is this Mr. Dixon? So, we know his emails and information's hitting out there.
Maybe we have this picture by thing, right?
This is him. Right. Well, I went to Crest, a law school, and those teachers and support staff, it's incredible. I, I really think that all of our teachers, countywide, need to do a field trip, and need to see what those teachers and those support staff deal with. It is the best school I've had. And we had greatness, Casey.
One of my friends at the YMCA, I sent a picture of my granddaughter's, she put it on the wall, as a gift to the YMCA, it was a huge picture of the ocean or water, and the artists will put the pictures if you, if you pay twenty-five dollars and upload a picture, whichever one you want, your family, it'll go on the wall, and your, your family, your child will live forever, and I thought that was such a neat idea to be part of that. So, I sent one of my granddaughters, and I have it part of the wall right there at the YMCA. It was really, really nice. Take a look at, on the website, see if something you might be interested in really is at school. So, I think we, I think I was one, last week, we were about to talk to different groups about our thoughts on, on the assets and why it's put on the, on the, onto the boat. And so, I, I think I was, I talked to hundreds of people, and he wrote television, talking about... about it, so. You know, I went to the, in Tampa, I think we saw that, so. But anyhow, we got out there and trying to tell, because a lot of people, just for building a new school, no, we know it's, it's not, we know it's maintenance.
Technology, transportation.
Technology. Right, right. Safety, yes, that's a big one too. Just wanted to mention that. I have some copies of the school board committee assignments and the, and pants council assignments. So, I want to look over this and maybe bring our thoughts back at the next meeting of where you would like to be next year. You might like to change the, the schools. Sometimes you have complexes, I always say complexes, two schools, and I could not be at both schools at the same time. So, take a look over that. Does, oh, I, I cast out the committee assignments, I'm sorry, here come the SAC assignments. So, look, look at the committee assignments or the SAC assignments and see what you're going to need next year, and maybe you can bring your thoughts back at the next board meeting about changes you'd like to see, particularly when it comes to conflicts and two, two things meeting at the same time, and you have to skip one or the other.
We need to, they find, school time, I say, maybe we need to.
Okay, that's, that's good. That's real important. And, and I'm glad you mentioned it, it's really important for schools to send out to us when the changes are made, because I, more than once, I think it was a place where there wasn't a need. It had been changed, it was planned, that's what I think. So, if they would, if they would send, when the changes come out, they'd send to us, so we can make it on my campus, change our calendar. I guess the Fernando Elementary School, I love to go out there. It's just like, you know, you go to Crest, you go to Fernando, it's a fuzzy feeling, warm, fuzzy feeling. And when I visit them on the second day, the school, we enjoy them a lot. And the, the schools, the SAC.
No.
Yes.
I've got a question for you here. So, on the right, the board member assignments, those that are highlighted were the ones from this balcony that we all stepped up to.
Right, exactly.
So, when will the assignments be made? Will they be made before a new board member is elected?
Well, yeah, that's, it could be August thirtieth, but that person realizes, you know.
Okay, yeah. Will it be before they take office, I guess I should say, before the board is?
Yeah. Now, I want to hear from you personally, I would like to go ahead and do it.
Right.
And do it now, so we, because we have meetings at start.
That's the problem is, I think you have to do it now. It's not always, it's, it's always better if you, I mean, it's better if you knew on one side, but then the problem is, is then you're starting schools and switching schools, and it's hard enough. So, I think at this point, the advantage is, is that I think we all have to probably decide what needs, our needs, and then, and try and be mindful of someone coming in to that. But we've usually, it's never been a problem. It, at least it hasn't, you know, I, I know I came in on the middle of it and, and it went fine.
Right.
It, it, and you know, and it takes, really, the first year you're, the new board member, if it's a new one or if it's the one that formerly was, they'll, they'll be fine.
Yeah. So, you know, always that situation, especially if you think, I have, like, they live next door to this school, they really want to go to that one.
Yeah.
But that's, so if we could, then the next week, what's our next date for next week? Yeah, September.
September thirteenth.
September thirteenth. If we could bring back our thoughts and our choices on the thirteenth, then they'd be good. Put that aside, and we'll return back. Any other questions? Second? No? Mr. Bradshaw?
Yeah.
Well, then, we stand the journey, the special meeting, and take a little break if you don't want to, and then we'll come back to the workshops in ten minutes.
And when you go to the workshop, you have to, to, to.
I was thinking the same thing. Yes, yes, what you, yes, yes, what you.